All right, it says we're on live.
Right, that's what I was just telling you, yep. But I'm not going to be able to broadcast it as I hope with the new service, so we're going to have to...
So Karen, if you want to do some tests with that later in the week, I'd be happy to try and see if we can put our heads together.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm just going to post the other link where did it go?
I think we're ready. Are we all here? Who's all in? No, we're not. Skinny group.
So, actually, I think everyone... Chris probably wasn't going to be here, so it does look like...
Is Jennifer coming?
Yeah, Jennifer and Dan.
Okay, yeah, you're right. Jennifer or Dan is...
Dan's here.
Where's Dan? I don't even see a number up there.
Steve Lane.
Well, here comes Jennifer, too. Okay.
All right, I'm just gonna... If I can get this link to come up.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi, everybody.
Where is Jennifer?
I'm here.
So Dan just doesn't have his camera on. Dan, can you say hi? Unmute yourself. It's Mike. Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Hello.
Oh.
I have a better hair day today, so I won't be on camera.
Okay, Mike.
That's no kind of excuse, Mike.
All right, so Jane, if you're ready to go...
Yeah, I'm ready. So welcome, everybody. This is the Fayetteville Planning Board meeting for the month of November. It's November 2nd, and I welcome you all to our Zoom meeting, which we've been conducting, or we've been conducting all of our planning board meetings since March on Zoom, so...
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We are now being recorded, so welcome. We have a pretty easy agenda tonight, and so why don't... Before we actually jump into the agenda items, I would like to just reflect back to the full board that since our, you know, in between our last meeting and this meeting, one of the applicants, which was the Puff City applicant for the Puff City store in Fayetteville Square, we had a discussion with them at our last meeting about their signage, and we were all a little confused about whether it was going to be a brown background with white letters or brown letters with a white background. And I don't even remember exactly what color scheme we had all agreed to in the meeting, but they switched it. They asked in between exact same colors, same wording, same size, same design to the sign, just, I think it's brown, I can't recall if it's brown.
It's a white background with brown lettering.
I think that's it. So they just flipped the color scheme. The question put to me was, do they need to come back to the planning board? And because all of the elements were exactly the same, and because we had a good discussion about, you know, flipping those colors, I said, "No, go ahead." I approved the flip. And so they went ahead and moved forward with that type of signage, so...
And I'm just clarifying that, and I read this in the minutes, that the edges of the sign will be scalloped, because I actually happened to be there in that plaza, and I noticed, so, in other words, their sign will, the sort of exterior edges of it will look like the other signs, and I think it was going to be about the same size. So there's a design coherence. Okay, good.
Yep, exactly. And that was one reason why the applicant had to come back and ask permission, because the property owner recognized that there was a variation, and he wanted to reinforce that all backgrounds should be cream-colored scalloped edges.
Good. I think that's good. It will look better.
So that's why he wanted to switch it.
Okay. Thanks, Jane. Thanks, Karen.
You're welcome.
All right, well, Mr. Townsend is on. I can promote him up so that he can present.
Yeah. Please do. And so that would be Mark Townsend. With respect to the planning board, our obligation is to look at his request for a variance to a fence height, and we, our responsibility is a recommendation to the ZBA. So, Mr. Townsend, if you're there and you would like to present to the board?
I think we're here. Can you see us? I can't...
Can you hear us?
We can hear you.
I'm not quite sure.
I know, I see the name, but I don't see... Okay.
Are you sharing your screen, Mr. Townsend?
I did. I hit the share, but...
You are screen sharing, it says. Huh.
Well, you need to somehow click onto an image or something, because we are just seeing the words Zoom on the screen on our end.
Sorry.
That's okay. Take your time. This is not a big deal.
Share. I hit share, and it just goes to the Zoom.
Okay.
Boy, we see you guys.
If you're looking for an application, I have it if you want me to share the...
No, we have the application right here. So, I mean, if you don't see us, I don't think that's...
Oh, there we are.
Hi.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So why don't you present, just introduce what you're planning to do, your application?
Sure. In the documents in front of you, you must have the survey that was done at the time that the house was completed. And what I did there was I put in where we currently have a six-foot-high vinyl fence, and down in the front of the property along the side is where I'm asking if we can put in a six, continue with the six-foot vinyl fence to the point of about 40 feet away from Walnut Street, and probably a good, I'm going to say 10 to 15 feet above the road at that point, too.
So there's no obstruction to any road or property? And our, and we have a letter from the neighbors who would very much love it if they got their free fence, because they have little children, and they would like the privacy also. And I don't know if there's pictures that we sent, because the pictures really kind of show it.
Well, I'm just want to, I want to talk about some clarification here, in that the purpose for this need to seek a variance is that this portion of your fence that you're talking about is technically in your front yard, correct?
Correct, in our front yard and in our neighbor's backyard.
Yeah, right.
Which is...
Yes, no, no, I understand what you're saying. And so our code calls for fences in the front yard to be only four feet.
Correct.
Right, so that's just a reminder to the planning board. I think the context of this property needs to be taken into consideration. You know, I did walk by your place, and you're right, the context of where the fence is located relative to the roadway, to your house, everything else is not the same as other typical village properties, and there's quite a bit of distance from the roadway to where the fencing is. So that's all, just mindful of the context. So do you have anything else you'd like to share? Any other information you'd like to share with us right now?
Well, I think, just, well, I guess it's not going to matter whether it's a four-foot or six-foot, but the safety concerns of our neighbors...
Yeah, the little kids, yeah.
They have very young children, in fact, you know, just a year old and a couple of year old, but soon they'll be toddling around, and just felt that the fence would be a greater safety for them from falling off any type of embankment there.
Yeah, and also, and also privacy for them and for us. And if you went by, you saw how it's really not like a typical village lot. It's not right near other houses, you know, where it would affect anything at the front, you know, the front of the property. Because it's kind of, it is the front of the property technically, but it doesn't really look like front of the property. It's, looks like their backyard, actually, so...
Okay. Planning board members, do you have any questions for the applicants? All right, any comments? Did everybody get a chance to go check out the site?
I'm sorry, I have a quick question, Jane.
Sure, go ahead, Jennifer.
I'm just looking at the photos, and I am just trying to figure out, that first photo where it shows your front facade, and then it's the one right next to that, it looks like the fence is partially constructed. I see posts. Had you started to build it and then realized, "Okay, that's what I wanted to confirm"? That's kind of what it looks like from this.
That's what happened, is that we were told by the fence company that there was no, and probably shame on us for not doing our own research on it, but we trusted that they knew what the zoning was, and then when the fence posts were going in, some neighbors had some concerns, and that's when we then found out that, oh, boy.
We had no idea. We were told...
No, it is the contractor's responsibility to know. I would say it was the contractor's responsibility to know the zoning and have the proper information. That's my view, but not that that's neither here nor there right now, but that's my take on it. They're professionally obligated to know that. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure that's what it looked like was going on.
So you're, this fence is on top of this...
In that same picture, is the picture...
No. Well, the survey picture's up and not the picture that...
Oh, yeah, this would be great if they could have that picture up, yeah.
Karen, can you move, move to the... There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, the top one.
Yes.
Well, Jane, I think it's interesting that if it was the neighbor asking for the fence, it would be allowed, because it was in the rear yard.
Yeah.
Now, yeah, so I don't know if it would apply differently because they're on a corner, but it's interesting.
So, this is Sarah. I have two comments that I think would be relevant to the ZBA, and one is, this is not going across the front yard where, like, parallel to Walnut Street. I think that would be more difficult to justify with a six-foot fence than being along the perimeter here. And I do think that the grade difference with the way this, the lot that this house is built on makes, the six-foot would blend better than it might in a, if it were more flat and closer to the house.
I think there's a lot to be said about the fact, about the context of the lot, which speaks to both what Joanne referenced, that this side yard, the front side yard is actually someone else's backyard. That's an unusual combination or context, and then also everything that Sarah just said. So I'm inclined to think that the differences, as I just mentioned, support the request for a variance here. And I think that there's enough distinction with this property and this context that we can easily identify this, those distinctions, so that this is not something that'll carry forward through other properties as an automatic. You know, we're not making, we're making a clear exception here.
I totally agree. And I actually keep thinking about the house that's on the intersection of Chapel and Clinton Streets on the northwest corner, and I think that is a great, if anyone can think of what that is, across from the old plastic factory. And I think that house is an excellent example of where the four-foot fence in the front yard is totally appropriate.
Yeah.
But then, once you get to the rear of the property, and actually, I think even as you go towards the rear of the property, on that particular site, it's six feet.
Yes.
And it's more appropriate there, too, because it provides some privacy and screening, whereas in the front yard with the four-foot, you still have that inviting front yard appearance and no visual obstructions on the corner for cars. So I think that similarly, I think, just as that's sort of the prototype for why the zoning regs are the way they are, I think this site, for all the reasons Jane mentioned, is, can completely defend being supportive of a dimensional variance.
Any other comments from board members? If not, I know that because this is just a recommendation from the board, we do not have to worry about seeker, and so I would entertain a motion. Jennifer?
Go ahead. Anybody? Motion, then, that we recommend this to the planning board for approval based on the criteria that's provided in the permit package and also the discussion here today relative to, you know, the fact that there's a rear yard adjacent to it, which could allow a fence like this, and also the uniqueness of the property, that it would not detract from the street or the neighborhood.
I have a second. Sarah, you second?
Yes, please.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. Your evening before the planning board is over for you guys. We just recommended a support, I guess a vote in favor of your request for a zoning variance. So good luck in front of the zoning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll bawl up with you for the next meeting.
Very good.
Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is Eva's Boutique.
There is one call in from somebody, I believe this was the... Mr. Higgins, is this your number that... Let me see here. Mr. Higgins, are you signed in? Oh, wait a minute, here we go. There we go. Mr. Higgins, can you hear us?
He appears to be muted.
Yep, I know. Waiting for him to unmute. Ed, can you hear us yet?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry about that. We've had some technical difficulties here, so we don't have visual for Zoom, so we ended up calling in. This is Ed Higgins and Eva Higgins here, representing Eva's Boutique. We appreciate the board taking time to review our application this evening.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight. My understanding of your application is straightforward, that you would like to relocate your current shop to 511 East Genesee Street. Go ahead.
Nope, that's correct.
So then, and, well, you have two applications before us tonight. One is site plan application, and that is literally to relocate your store to a particular location, I think, right next to the dentist?
Yep.
Which is right next to the puppy grooming store, right?
Yes, and actually, it was the puppy store, the puppy groom, or rather.
Okay. All right, so...
Eight.
Go ahead. Okay, so that's one application, and the other application is sign permit review. So with respect to your site plan application, I recognize that you have included in your written application a lot of drawings and what you intend to do to the interior of the site. For the exterior of the site, my understanding is you simply want to improve the entrance doorway. Is that right?
Well, there's improvements within the confines of the space, but there are no plans to alter the exterior of it at all.
Okay, okay. Okay. With respect to site plan application, board members, do you have any questions for the Okay, so we're, I'm not saying that anybody has questions. This is a pretty, like I said, this is a pretty clear, pretty straightforward move. Planning board members, the other question I have for you tonight is, because this applicant has been in operation in Fayetteville, you know, for, I don't even know how many years, quite some time, we're familiar with their operation, and it sounds to me like they're literally just moving their operation. Site conditions are not changing at all. We know all the site conditions on 511 East Genesee Street. Because of those, if you agree with me that there are no major changes in that regard, then we can deem this action a type-two action, which would not require any seeker or environmental review. If anyone on the board feels differently from that, I would appreciate your comments so we can have a discussion on that point for site plan application. I suppose this also would apply to their sign permit request.
I think that makes sense. I'd like to commend them on just a very organized packet. It was easy to review.
I totally agree with both comments of Sarah's.
Okay. All right. All right, so no questions on site plan, and we're all in agreement that this is a straightforward move with no changes in site conditions. Okay, well, let's put our attention on to this sign permit request. It, again, looks pretty straightforward, easy to read. Applicant, if you would not mind letting me know if there are, what says beige background with black lettering?
That's correct. We were going to stay with the, you know, within harmony of the existing signage throughout the rest of the plaza, so the existing panel right now is kind of an off-white, and we're going to use that with the black lettering, as you saw in the detail here in the application.
Board members, any questions, any questions relative to the sign permit?
No.
Apropos of our discussion at the beginning of the meeting about the minutes, were we just saying that the owner of the plaza likes the backgrounds to be white?
Yes.
Wasn't it cream-colored that he wanted?
Cream-colored, I'm sorry.
Right.
And I'm sorry, what color was this going to be? Did you say beige?
It's...
As long as it's in the family.
We're not changing the background color. I call it an off-white, I guess...
Oh, okay. That's fine. So it will be consistent?
Yeah, it's exactly, the only thing, we're putting black letters on the existing backboard.
Yep, that's fine. I just, I thought maybe I heard this might be tan, and it sounded like they wanted the other ones to be white, but it sounds like it will be the same background color, however one chooses to describe that color.
Yeah. You nailed it, Jennifer.
Okay. That's what I think is the important thing, is that it's visually consistent.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds great.
Ultimately, did the landlord sign off on it?
Yeah.
He didn't sign off on it, right?
Well, yeah.
Well, they should be aware of it on the application, they're supposed to sign off on it, so they should be aware of what's being submitted by each tenant.
Okay, because of my prior comments regarding the consistency of the site plan application from what, operationally, from what you're currently managing at your current location to where you're moving, the site conditions are not changing whatsoever. Same thing with sign. We are deeming both your site plan application and your sign permit application as a type-two, and therefore, there will not be a need for a seeker review on either one of these applications tonight. So with that, would a board member like to make a motion with respect to one or both of these applications tonight?
I will. I make a motion that our board approve the site plan as submitted, and also the sign permit application as submitted.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? All right, very good. Well, congratulations, you just got approved for both your site plan application and your sign permitted, sign permit application, so thank you for staying in our community, and good luck with your move.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration.
All right. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, you, too.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, I think that leaves us with meeting minutes from last month. Any questions or comments or edits?
I sent mine in here, and it was minor, but one question. It was just about the paragraph, one from the end. It seemed like there was a question, maybe it didn't get answered, but did you look at it, look into that, Karen?
Yep, I did try to reword it a little bit differently. Let me see if I can find it here. I pretty much just wrote as the conversation was rolling out. So the, it was the paragraph where it began, the question was asked how the windows would be decorated as the products selling are for those over 18 years old. The shop would be selling smoking products only. The applicant was also asked if there will be a smoking room on site, to which they replied, "No."
That works.
And then Sarah, to your point, I did realize that I dropped off the end of a sentence in the beginning of page two, where the sign rendering submitted was in black and white, rather, then in color, is what I, I had dropped those words, so I finished that sentence.
So with those amendments, I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No, very good. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I think this is maybe the most brief meeting we've had since I've been chairing, yeah.
It's called efficient.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to say, Jane, when you said we have some easy cases, I thought, "Don't curse it."
Yeah.
Right, right. No, I knew these were, so, all good, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. I miss you, and maybe, I don't know, I don't know.
How are we going to get Karen's cookies?
I know.
Cookies.
Yeah, for Christmas.
I'll figure out something. It looks like there was a question posed. Casey Cleary is in the audience, says, "Thank you all for your service to the village. If you could please provide us with any update on 547 East Genesee Street, it would be most appreciated." I'm just reading her question. "At the last Board of Trustees meeting, the mayor mentioned the applicant will be changing the function of the senior memory care facility to a senior housing project. Any news?" We haven't gotten any news, Casey. I haven't received anything, and we haven't heard... We haven't gotten any news, Casey. I, we haven't received anything, and we haven't heard anything other than whatever conversation the mayor may have had. So we don't have any other update but that.
That's right. Planning board has not heard a word from the applicant. And we certainly have not received any materials from the applicant and not had any conversations with the applicant in any way. So that actually leads me to a comment for the planning board. It's been some time since we've had an application of any significance that has paused in its progress through any kind of review process. It's years ago, I think, when this happened, but we're there again. I think we spoke last, was it August, guys, or was it July? I can't even remember. I think it was August when, no, it was July.
I think it was June at their last presentation.
Was it June?
Their last presentation was June, and just before the July 2nd meeting, they had submitted a letter to indicate they wanted to table the application.
Okay.
It has been sometimes, and I just learned myself, listening into the Board of Trustees meeting when they last met at the end of October, that he did have a conversation that they are rethinking, as Casey mentioned, the memory care facility. So I guess they have given the mayor the indication as if something will be resubmitted, but we have not received or heard anything definitively.
Well, it's been, that's five months. That's a long time. And so I, I'm going to ask Karen that you reach out to the applicant and request some, some kind of formal indication on their end, what they're, what they're going to do. Because what happens on our end is, you know, we, five months is a long time to wait before anything comes back. And at five, at the five-month cutoff, in my opinion, you, you basically are essentially starting, I don't want to say from ground zero, but you're certainly not starting where you left off. Unless, this case, they just want to go straight into an EIS, and I guess we'll start it. We'll, we'll make that decision, then we'll go into, we'll go back to what we need. But it'd be good to hear from them. I think officially, the planning board had, prior to this, set a preference of nothing more than three-month pause. And then we would start considering an applicant to have abandoned their application. Because this applicant has been in communication with others in the village, I'm not going to consider it abandoned, but we do need to have an update. They don't, they don't have to come before us in December, but I do think we need to have a written update for our December meeting.
Understood.
Any comments or clarification that other board members would like on that project?
I think that's a good strategy. I was thinking that it's, I think it's later in the process, but somehow, like, if you don't act on a permit, by six months, that something else happens. I just think that that is a reasonable timeframe.
Yes, you're right, Sarah. It's from preliminary site approval to final. If you don't act on the preliminary to seek your final within six months, then you can lose that approval. So we're moving, by December, they'll be into six months. So, yeah. Okay. Everyone, I'm expecting that I'll see your beautiful faces exactly the same way I'm seeing them now at our December meeting. I don't think that we'll be together. I, this is not something I ever anticipated like this for this long. So I appreciate everybody's tenacity and sticking with it. And I think we're doing the right thing to keep things moving along in our village and keeping all of us healthy. So I don't know what to expect in 2021. I think we, we need to take it month by month. I'm assuming, Karen, you haven't heard anything legally from the governor?
No, I'll have to check, because it always comes right on the heels of our meeting.
Right.
Because he can only do it every 30 days. But I think we, at this point, we have the option, especially now that we have a new broadcast system in place, to reconsider meeting in person as well as doing it via Zoom, so.
So Karen, it looks like Casey's raising her hand.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if we can help her to chat. I think her mic is, I think she's been unmuted. Casey, can you, can we hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, back to 547. If the planning board, the type of action, if, if the clock sort of runs out on them, does that mean that they could resubmit this whole thing and seek a different lead agency?
Oh, yeah, it's a great question. I don't really know the answer to that. I think technically, if they wanted to drop this application and start another one and seek a different lead agency, I think technically they could do that. I'm not sure their outcome's going to be, I don't know what their outcome would be. So we can't, if an applicant wants to stop an application, that's their prerogative. It's nothing we can, can control. And they can always come back and try again. So both of those steps are within their decision-making realm. If the applicant wants to stay, I think an equally complex question is if they choose to continue their application as is, but in a modified fashion. I guess our lead agency decisions remain the same, but we're not, we're not starting where we left off. There's, if it's going to be a different type of use, a different size of use, all that stuff, we're going to have to, we're going to have to, you know, take a few steps back and, you know, take a close look at what the modified application is presenting, so.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Also, I think Ted should clarify this or research it, but I, I think offhand that if it's a type of environmental review that involves coordinated action, then I think that the municipality needs to have a discussion among the different decision-making boards that would be part of the coordinated review to determine which agency is the lead agency. I think, I don't know, Ted should confirm this, rather than it being really the applicant's decision. I think it depends upon the municipality's decision.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely correct. I'll double-check that. But when there are, when there is more than one agency involved, a discussion between those to determine who should be the lead agency would obviously be appropriate.
Good. Yeah, I always assumed it would have been a discussion between, a discussion within the municipal boards. So we'll figure it all out. We've all done a good job to date. Once the applicant has an understanding of what they want to do as they move forward, then we'll all figure it out. Until then, I don't think it's worth any of our time guessing. We just don't know what they're going to do. So I, I just assume, wait, if the applicant's not going to do anything this year, I think getting written notice of that fact is what I'm looking for. I don't want radio silence for another month, so. That's my position. So with that, we'll work hard on figuring out how we're going to get Karen's cookies into each individual home, but we can make this work.
I know what I'll be doing in the next couple of weekends.
Yeah.
What did you say, Karen? I missed it.
I said, "I know what I'll be doing in the next couple of weeks."
No pressure.
No worries. We'll figure it out.
As long as we keep our mind on the important things.
You can tell I'm hungry.
So with that, who's going to make a motion to adjourn?
I will. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second? I second it.
Dan seconded?
Dan did.
Yeah.
Dan, great. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you all very much. Stay safe.
Thanks, everybody. Great to see your faces.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Oh, God.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, everyone.
I won't say before this.
Thank you.